In the Queenston Musical Theatre Camp where she had a lot of fun seeing pieces from the Phantom of the Opera, and this summer she hopes to be a camp counselor at Cave Springs Camp in Beanville. Alex's dream is to meet and sing with Josh Proben. So Alex, if you'd come forward please. Thank you for joining us this evening.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our songs commence. With Boeing hearts we see thee rise, the true north sung and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our lands glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.[96.82][96.82](Applause)
I'm glad the members of council have all been here this evening. Thank you very much for your rendition. We wish you well in your studies and good luck. Thank you again. Members of council, the first order of business is the adoption of the minutes of the council meeting of March 19, 2007. A pleasure of council, moved by Council Fisher, seconded by Council Diadati. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. This time I'll ask for a disclosure of any pecuniary interest that may exist with any matters on the agenda this evening. Council Einoni.
Thank you. Check 309267 as it's made out to myself.
Thank you. Council Carroll.
Thank you, Your Worship. On in planning, item number 24205, the 12150600, Ontario Limited, I have an interest in that company.
Okay, so noted. Council Maves.
I have a conflict on check number 309076, that's my place of employment.
Okay. Are there any others? I have a conflict with regard to check number 309149, table to myself, and I wanted to declare a conflict even though I don't have a pecuniary interest in the matter with regard to the Rotary Club of Niagara Falls Sunrise. That comes before. At this time, our first deputation is with Project Share. This evening, joining us is Diane Corkin, who will present awards to the restaurants that participated in Chili Cook Off. And this time I'd like to call on Diane Corkin to come forward, please. She has her hands full.
I'd like to thank the fifth week staff in the second annual year in Project Cook Off, which successfully did raise over $7,500 for Pride of the Year's Homeless Program. So I'd like to start with, we prepared some class for the Fall's Year Casino Resort, Chef Frank's Doggy's here. And the Fall's Year Casino Resort gets the award for Best Overall Presentation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I also appreciate the work that you have done. I'd like to take this one back to the team and thank you very much.
I'd like to name the participating chefs from the casino, Chef Jeffrey Pichuk, Chef Cory Cantola, Chef Neil Babich, Chef Chris Lewis, Chef Will Gray, and Chef Steve Taylor. So thank you very much. Congratulations to these four. I'd like to call Ken Snell from McHague. Congratulations to Ken and McHague, the courtyard. They prepared the chili with the best bite, the spicy chili, as awarded by the citizens of Niagara Falls. So thank you so much, Ken. I'd like to call Chef Downsealer and Daryl Gaye from Chicken Charlie's. And Chicken Charlie's were awarded this award for the best chef presentation, the best uniform. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Sydney Crick from Edgewater's. Edgewater's from the Niagara Park Commission. We have a special award for the best secret ingredient. And do you mind if I say your region?
Sure.
Okay. Sydney's ingredient was saffron. It's the most expensive spice in the world. It's very noble.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And the citizens of Niagara Falls voted the taste of chili to the Capri and Chef Richard Melbury. I'd like to present the Capri. Richard already has his own trophy, but the Capri gets to have that trophy for year end week. And this is for the best secret chili. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Members of council, it's my pleasure to thank all the participating chefs, and more importantly, all those who participated in that day. It was a great afternoon. Diane, I guess Project Share has done excellent job of preparation, so we're pleased to be part of it and probably be a part of that and to see the participation amongst the individuals this growing each year. And this year, we said we earned $7,500 in awards, so congratulations.
Well, thank you so much, we support you.
The next deputation, members of council, is the presentation by Reni Piscatelli, along with Inga Stokowski, manager of the Children's Services Niagara Falls Public Library, who will address council on the upcoming event to promote literacy on Saturday, April 14th, at the Community Center. Welcome, Reni.
Hi. Hello, everyone. Our plan to promote and celebrate family literacy every year in the city of Niagara Falls has been an unqualified success. Your Worship, Mayor Stokowski, members of council, staff of City Hall, ladies and gentlemen, we are here tonight to invite you to our fourth annual celebration of family literacy at the McBain Community Center, to be held from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on Saturday, April the 14th. Our theme this year is Move It, Shape It, Read It. My name is Reni Piscatelli. I serve as a volunteer from the Board of the Public Library on the Family Literacy Event Committee. Inga Stokowski, a dedicated manager of Children's Services and Chair of the Committee, is also here with me tonight. One of the best parts of this event is the opportunity to partner with so many services in Niagara Falls that support the need for good reading skills. Our success as a civilized, caring country depends on the ability of our people to communicate well. The written word has brought us closer together in understanding and appreciation of each other. A literate community is a more informed and vibrant population. Last year's event was a joyful celebration of reading. An interested parent put together this video, which we will now show you. I believe that you will catch the excitement of the day and the high energy of the day despite the fact that these are still photographs.
(Singing) I have a place, I like to stay. I hate love, but for big things. And I'm there, I'm surrounded with love. From down below and up above. The greatest place in the city, the city of the future. My family tree. The little bit of dream I'm spreading out loud. It's a place where we're all there. And it's gonna be every day today. And I'm there. And it's gonna be every day today. Everything is going great today. I'm feeling fine so fine. I feel like smiling, dancing all the time. And I'm there. And it's gonna be every day today. And I'm there. And it's gonna be every day today. I'm gonna share the feeling with everyone I see. They wanna be smiling, dancing, dressed like me. And I'm there. And it's gonna be every day today. And I'm there. And it's gonna be every day today. When I'm feeling so happy, nothing's left to my brain. One, two, three, four, five, six, everything will be okay. Let's make every day like today. And I'm there. And it's gonna be every day today. And I'm there. And it's gonna be every day today. It's gonna be, it's gonna be, it's gonna be today, today. The last thing we do is shake your hand. Wait, 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 stop. Wait, 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 stop. Wait, stop. Flashing green. The last thing we do is turn around. The last thing we do is turn around. Turn, 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 stop. The last thing we do is turn around. The last thing we do is turn around. The flashing green. The flashing green.
Well, as you can see, it was a great success last year. Thousand people, thank you, Mayor, who attended. You know how great that was. So this year, we're going to be celebrating the works of celebrated Canadian author, Barbara Reed. She's famous for working in plasticine, and she's coming to the event and she's going to be reading the stories from her very famous books. So we're delighted that we can have an actual live author come. I mean, it's been really fun to hang out with the turtle, but it's nice to have the author arrive as well. We have music with Dan the Music Man and the usual crafts, foods, refreshments, toys. You could see from the tape that it's really an exciting three hours, and you're all welcome to come. And, you know, you know the value of literacy. I've seen your council packages, so pretty heavy. But it's more than that. It's trying to make the association in the child that reading is a pleasure, that reading is fun, and reading is a worthwhile activity. So that's really what we're trying to stress. So we'd love to see you there. Thank you very much for your time.
Inga, thank you as well. We appreciate your effort at the Niagara Falls Library, of course, and with Reni being a member of the Board, it's nice to see engagement. Of course, the attendance speaks for itself. The parents were really enjoying it as well, and the numbers, I'm sure, will grow this year. So thank you very much. We appreciate your effort. The next deputation that we have, members of council, is from Learning in Action. Crane Gittens, Vice Principal, and Monica Blaylock of Wesleyan Secondary School, along with Sam Shad, Vice Principal, and Melissa Dolphy of James Morgan Elementary School, who are presenting a District School Board of Niagara, who make a presentation to recognize April as Education Month. Would you come forward, please? I guess we have half the card. Welcome.
Thank you. Greetings on behalf of the District School Board of Niagara. April is Education Month, and our theme is Learning in Action. And I'd like to introduce Melissa Dolphy, a Grade 5 student at James Morgan Public School, for her thoughts on Learning in Action.
Great. Welcome.
I'm a city capital member and friend. My name is Melissa Dolphy, and I am in Grade 5. I attend James Morgan Public School. I'm proud to be part of my school for the past six years because I have learned new sports, gotten great field trips, and have had great opportunities to try new things. Through the years, I have learned how good it feels to share and give back to our community. Some of the opportunities I have had at James Morgan, to come involved in the community, is through collecting charity money and through donating student donations to Project Share for Christmas. We visited the elderly at Oakwood Lodge in May Craft. I've also been involved in so many things at our school that have taught me all about responsibility. Such as student secretary, where I volunteer my time at nutrition break to answer the school phone on the secretary's lunch break. I am an active member of the Student Council, where I have helped to organize activities and theme days, such as school dances, spirit days, fundraising, and teacher recognitions, just to name a few. I have also been involved in the mood crew at our school, where students order months for the month, and this is for every day by students like myself to their classes at nutrition break. Our school has many activities to teach them to be active and healthy. For instance, track and field, basketball, volleyball, badminton, skating, and house tricks to participate in our nutrition breaks. We even have walking Wednesdays, which is one of our teacher's studies. We walk around the school for exercise. Being on this team has taught me how to play as a team and work as others. We have a chess club that runs there from school year. They have books exchanged yearly, where students think books that they have read or don't want anymore, to exchange them for new ones. This is a great way to recycle good used books. Our school has also offered community nights where students and their families can enjoy new things, whether watching a movie or reading, or attending a parenting workshop. Our field trips like Sues, Heartland Forest, Water Park, Sir Adam's Batage Station, Reveal Time, have been both lots of fun and educational. I am looking forward to a week of Camp Bonham in Grade 8. My sister Wendy had lots of fun trying new things and meeting other students from schools all over Ontario. Well, I could go on about the great things to explore and learn about James Morgan Public School, but I only have five minutes. So I will close in saying that I hope public schools will always be able to offer these activities and learning opportunities, and possibly as the years go on. Thank you for your time. Also, I would like to present Mayor Stokowski with Learning in Action shirt on behalf of the District School Board of Niagara.
Thank you, Melissa and Sam, for updating us. In fact, last week, there was a kickoff breakfast on the South of Tally, with over 600 people attended, so that says a lot, and it's always very well attended. So thank you very much for taking us, updating us here, and that's for the presentation of the shirt. Thank you.
Yes, so members of council, could we have a motion acknowledging April as Education Month? Moved by Council Maves, seconded by Council Peter Angelo. Any discussion? Having seen none? All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Thank you again. Would you prefer, could you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning bylaw to permit a proposed multi-residential and prestige industrial development at the northwest of Portage Road and Stanley Avenue intersection. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, March 2nd, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process as applicable, shall leave their name on the sign and cheaps outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to ask the Planning Director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr.?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, ladies and gentlemen, this particular application is essentially a long-range development application. There's a number of proposed land uses being considered this evening, and in addition, there is, in the center of this project, is a future nine-hole golf course, which would be the subject of a future application to the Niagara-Starkman Commission. So in the center portion of the property, where you see the large pit operation, that would become a future golf course. That would be an application of the Starkman Commission, and surrounding it to the bottom will be a residential local family proposal, and to the Stanley Avenue side, a prestige industrial proposal as well. The notice in this slide, there's some very prominent land uses. It's the Eagle Valley Golf Course to the west. You have the CN line that provides the boundary to the west as well. Portage Road, essentially on the south. Stanley Avenue to the east. And further to the top of the plan is the Fruit Belt Parkway Industrial Plan subdivision. In terms of the application this evening, we are dealing with three things. We are dealing, first and foremost, with an urban boundary expansion. We have quite a convoluted urban boundary in this portion of our community. We have the Starkman Control Area, we have the Region's Urban Boundary on the city Niagara Falls Official Plan, and there's an irregularity here in terms of the boundary locations. This application proposes to make those boundaries coincident. The urban boundaries and the official plan would be coincident with the Niagara-Starkman Commission-controlled boundary. So essentially, we're dealing with a minor urban boundary adjustment to reconcile these boundary differences. With respect to the official plan, we're dealing with two forms of land use. Part one would be a residential local family development. It would be comprised of two 10-story apartment buildings totaling 240 units, and those two buildings are shown to the south of Part One, and then the line of townhouses, the 24 townhouse dwellings being proposed. On the Stanley Avenue side, Part Two would be 12 townhouse dwellings, and Part Three would be a prestige industrial component. And again, that middle portion where the sand pit would be, would be a future nine-hole golf course. In terms of the regional policy plan amendment, the applicant has requested an urban boundary expansion to accommodate Part One of the proposal. Part One is the area that currently is outside the National Urban Boundary and needs to be brought in. This boundary adjustment, as indicated, will resolve a discrepancy between the city's regional and NEC control areas. In terms of our official plan, the property is designated in part Niagara-Starkman Control Area, industrial designation and open space. The subject land is proposed to be re-designated for residential industrial purposes. Applications to many official plan are required to meet a number of criteria, and some of those criteria are as follows. The proposed multiple-family residential project is approved to be located at the intersection of two arterial roads, that would be Stanley Avenue and Portage Road. The proposed density of the residential units would conform with the official plan policies. There are about 75 units per hectare. The proposed two apartment buildings exceed the city's height guidelines, but they are well separated from existing low-rise residential areas, which provides an opportunity for consideration of a slight increase in height. The policy actually is six stories, and the applicant here is 10. And I'll point out here that council did consider and approve a similar type of application that was part of the adjacent golf course. There was a 10-story apartment building approved by council for that development. As a further improvement, staff recommends that maybe the apartment buildings and the townhouses on Part One be altered in their location. In our report, we give a few reasons why. We just think that the greater separation distance between existing residents and the apartment buildings, although it's substantial at the present time, and it would afford the townhouses full light or right to sunlight, and there would be no shadowing effects on those lower units. In terms of safety suitability and compatibility, the proposed multiple-family component of the project is well separated from existing residences and industrial operations. There is a letter here this evening that is stating some concerns about the Fruit Belt Plan subdivision, industrial subdivision to north, and I believe there might be someone speaking on that matter. To ensure the compatibility of the proposed adjacent quarry, it was our recommendation that a hold symbol be implemented until the quarry operations terminate. And by the way, there's two operating quarry operations, one run on by the applicant and one further to the west. The Ministry of Environment and the other region have both indicated that there are just considerations that would be incompatible with the current operation, and therefore the hold symbol would be very important to ensure that those pits terminate and are rehabilitated before the residential proposal is allowed to proceed. And also in terms of safety suitability and compatibility, increased setbacks are required along the adjacent railway line for some of the proposed units. In terms of need, the city of Niagara Falls has an ample supply of housing at the present time. However, this is a very small application, and it would introduce new multiple-family units into the north end of our community, where there's not a lot of opportunity for that type of development on the north end. In terms of the available municipal services, the municipal water and sanitary services have capacity to accommodate the proposed development. A traffic study has been prepared and is recommending endorsement of this project, subject to some road improvements. And if I can mention the few improvements. Intersection improvements at Mountain and Portage with an all-way stop, a left-hand turn-in to the project from Stanley Avenue, and a right-hand turn-in from Portage Road. The region is also recommending a left-hand turn-in to the project from Portage Road as well. In terms of housing, this is a high-end residential project, and it should have a positive impact on the residential space. In terms of zoning, the entirety of the property is currently zoned extractive industrial because of the existing quarrying operation. And the three components of the proposal, apartments would be zoned R5D, which is an apartment zoning. The townhouses would be zoned R4, which is a lower-density forum of townhouse zoning, and then the prestige industrial zone would apply to Part Three. The holding zone regulation would be lifted based on four things happening. Once the mining operations are closed and rehabilitated. Two, a stormwater management facility is properly developed on consultation with the Starkman Commission. Three, that railway noise mitigation measures would be provided. And four, that agreement be executed between Hydro One, the city and the region regarding new driveway entrance into the project. I will vote that there is a current right-of-way into the project called Brass Road. That road alignment is very close to the bridge overpass with the CN. A safety problem would exist there. Therefore, a new entranceway is being proposed further along Portage Road, and which would be acceptable to all three parties, subject to formalizing those agreements. And one final concern is that SciTech has indicated by several letters, concerns about private rights aways over a portion of the property. These are private matters between the current applicant and SciTech. It's not a matter particularly for Mr. Council's consideration, but our recommendation this evening would be... evening would be to allow a little bit of time for those matters to resolve by not passing the zoning bylaw immediately, by allowing a few weeks to transpire before that bylaw is brought forward. That would allow the two parties to finalize their concerns. It concludes in this evening that the request to amend the official plan to designate the lands in residential and industrial can be supported for following reasons. The adjustment in the urban boundary is binary in nature and will reconcile urban boundaries with the Niagara-Starkman Commission-controlled boundary. The proposed residential uses aren't conform with the official plan criteria for considering land use changes, will be compatible with adjacent uses, subject to those stolen provisions that I mentioned. And thirdly, that the prestige industrial development will enhance the gateway into the city and will be more compatible with nearby residential land uses. It's our recommendation this evening that the council endorse the regional policy plan amendment. Secondly, that the council approve the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment to develop the multiple-family and prestige industrial development, subject to the hold provisions that I mentioned. And as further, I suggest that a switch occurs with respect to the apartment buildings and the townhouses on part one. And finally, that the passage of the naming bylaw not occur until SciTech can, as it is concerned, with respect to right-of-ways across the land, subject address with the applicant himself. Those are our recommendations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dervison. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment other than the applicant? Please come forward and give your name and address for the record, please.
Your worship, members of council. My name is James Webb. I'm a professional land use planner from the city of Hamilton. The address of my company is 244 James Streets, North.
Thank you.
Your worship, I'm before you this evening to provide comments on behalf of Modern Corporation. They are a landowner immediately adjacent and to the north of the subject applications. And at the outset, we'd like to indicate that we do, in fact, have some concerns with the applications that are before you this evening. In particular, our concerns relate to the introduction of sensitive land uses to residential uses, specifically on the part-two lands of the subject applications. I have provided a witness submission, which I understand has been distributed. I would like to make a brief presentation as well, if I may, and following that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions from council or staff. Again, and I'll apologize, I've -- Modern Corporation owns a number of properties on Fruit Belt Parkway. There's four properties in total, three on the south side and one on the north side. They have some 30 acres of designated employment land currently in their hold and are used for a variety of purposes. There's 200 jobs that are employed on those subject lands. A very important piece of employment land. And I make the case carefully to say, this is an existing use of employment land within the city of Niagara Falls that makes a significant contribution towards the employment assessment of the city. Modern Corporation, their daily operations do involve significant truck traffic. There is in excess of 100 trucks on that property that could make anywhere from two to three round trips per day. So the nature of that operation is such that it generates significant amounts of truck traffic. It does generate significant amounts of potentially adverse effects with respect to adjoining land uses. The proposal that's before you tonight is to re-designate lands in close proximity to Modern, from industrial to residential. I speak specifically to the part-two lands. And it's already been acknowledged by staff and by the various consulting agencies that those lands are within what the Ministry of Environment refers to as the influence area. They're within a certain measured proximity of the Modern Corporation where it's regarded that you are within an area where it's likely to experience adverse effects because of that existing operation. And we use those criteria to understand that, yes, it's flagged, there might be concerns. We need to better understand what the characteristics of that existing use are, and what the potential for land use conflicts may arise from the introduction of the sensitive land uses. And the ministry guidelines are clear, and the applicant has submitted their necessary studies. Guidelines are clear. It's the onus, it's upon the applicant, to carefully assess those existing uses, study them, determine the impacts, confirm what is the appropriate separation distances, and implement the necessary mitigation measures. Policy context for this application begins with provincial policy statements. I made the point at the outset with respect to employment lands in the province, and in particular, more recently, initiatives at the provincial level. The province is back in land use planning. And a very key and focused element of that planning is the protection of employment lands. Section 1.3 of the provincial policy statement speaks quite clearly to the provincial interest and the protection of existing employment land. The criteria are to protect that land for its existing and future uses, and to avoid encroachments and undermining the viability of those industrial uses. The PPS now goes one step further. It includes a prohibition that states you shall not re-designate employment lands, as is the case for the part-two lands here, unless it is done through a comprehensive review initiated by the municipality. And that does not exist in the context of this application. And that review is to go much more beyond the review that's been done in the context of this application. If the municipality were to undertake a comprehensive review, it requires a complete and thorough assessment of need for employment land, need for the new use schemes proposed, and confirmation that the municipality does in fact have adequate municipal land available and inventory to ensure the underlying intent is maintain the balanced growth. It's my patient, excuse me, it's my opinion, your worship, members of council, the subject application, in particular, the part-two lands, conflict with the provincial policy statement. The higher test in the PPS is the prohibition on the re-designation of industrial lands to sensitive land uses. And in my opinion, I do not believe that that test has been properly addressed. In re-designating these lands from employment to a sensitive land use, you are now potentially in a position where Modern Corporation, as an existing viable operation with opportunities for future expansion, is now potentially prejudiced. By bringing that sensitive land use into close proximity, new residents, non-employment uses, you're creating a potential for conflict. And it's our opinion, it's my opinion, as a professional land use planner, I'm not sure that those conflicts have been properly addressed to the point where Modern is in a position to accept the introduction of this new land use in such close proximity. It's my recommendation, and I believe that this is set out quite clearly in my written submission, it's our submission that there's two options here. Either the applicant remove or delete, change the application such that the part-two lands are not requesting a residential land use. Modern Corporation obviously has no concern that those lands remain in an employment designation. Alternatively, Modern Corporation would be pleased to sit down with the owners and go through in detail the technical studies that they think are necessary to confirm absolutely that there will not be any future land use conflicts created by the introduction of this new land use. Your worship, that concludes my presentation. If there are any questions from council, I'd be pleased to respond at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. I do have a question from Council Ryan O'Leary.
Thank you through you to Mr. Webb, and then a question to Mr. Dervison. Mr. Webb, in the public meetings, did your, did your company attend, or did Modern send a representative to the public meetings?
No, they did not. I can explain that. Modern is a very large corporation. The actual notice only came to their attention last week. It first went to their head office in the United States, and it wasn't until last week, last Wednesday, that the notice surfaced on someone's desk. We had a local interest. Our apology, but notwithstanding the concerns, we're still in quite battle. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. May, to Mr. Dervison. He brought up a number of points, specifically it being contrary to provincial policy. That's not reflected in your report. Can you comment on that?
Mr. Dervison?
Thank you. Through you, Ms. May. And Mr. Webb has brought up three points. One is regarding the application of proper distance separation guidelines. Mr. Brady, his analysis did do a free throw analysis of separation distances in conformity with Ministry of Environment guidelines. So there's a question whether or not this 300-meter separation distance is being met or not. And Mr. Brady will address that point more clearly. With respect to the comprehensive view aspect, we did consider that it is, provincial government's growth plan requires that urban boundary expansions be subject to comprehensive municipal reviews. The city of Niagara Falls is undertaking a comprehensive review. The region is undertaking a comprehensive review. The ministry, however, has allowed recognition of very minor boundary adjustments under certain situations. We are dealing here with a 10-acre urban boundary adjustment, and the problem I identified to the council is with the fairly convoluted urban boundary here. It does not consist with the Niagara-Starkman Control Area. Therefore, the small size and the disparity that currently exists was reason enough that we went to the region and asked if we could propose this particular form of amendment, and the answer was yes. So that, we do not believe that there's a conflict with respect to the provincial government's growth plan and its objectives. Thirdly, and it's a very well point taken, there are industrial land uses and residential land uses certainly are a potential land use conflict. We particularly recommend, are recommended here, a holding symbol with respect to the cessation of the quarry operations, then the rehabilitation of that site or those sites to be compatible with this residential area. But with respect to the industrial developments to the north, indeed, there could be further mitigation measures that will be looked at. Our report recognizes that there are more detailed things to be considered in the next, future phases of the planning of the proposed us, and that is a very serious consideration, that proper mitigation measures be taken into account. Now, Mr. Brady will provide council with an explanation of the mitigation measures that the applicant is proposing between part-two and part-three. Although part-three isn't going to be industrial land use, it will be itself intervening land use, there also is some mitigation measures being proposed there with respect to sensitive noise considerations. So, that's my explanation of the matters that Mr. Webb has brought up. They're all very well taken. Mr. Brady has submitted a comprehensive planning report. I believe Mr. Webb has had an opportunity to review that report. However, he still has concerns unresolved in the view of his client. I would like to stop with that explanation, and council will have more information with respect to Mr. Brady's more fuller details that I could provide.
Thank you, Mr. Dervison. Council Ryan O'Leary?
That's fine.
Okay, council, you have it.
Thank you, your worship. My question is just simply, in regard to the sensitivity to the employment lands, is it just section two that you're concerned about, section one, or your client is concerned about, is section one acceptable?
Part one. Sorry, Mr. Webb?
Through you, your worship, yes. We do not have as great a concern with the part-one lands. They have a greater separation distance. It's the part-two lands that are getting within that influence area, starting to push the envelope with respect to the separation distance.
Yes, Council Peter Angel.
Hey, your worship, just on that point, I'm, so that's from through you to either Mr. Dervison or Ms. Kelly. The recommendation that's before us is basically to approve the application, which would be approving the rezoning of part-one, and part-two, and part-three. If the company that Mr. Webb were to, I guess, launch an appeal, would the appeal be against all parts, or would it only be specific to part-two? And what I'm asking is, would the developer be allowed to go ahead with part-one, or should the motion be split?
Ms. Kelly?
Through you, your worship. As it is right now, if council were to approve the application that's before you, it's the application in whole, which is all of the three parts. That's the application that was submitted to council, and it's the application that you're going to master. I would suggest that certainly in terms of an appeal, the appellant could choose to appeal only a portion of, but that's rather unusual. And it's not the norm that you would see someone indicating that they're only, they might have an issue, but they would hold the whole development up.
Council Peter Angel.
Hey, your worship, I guess going just to follow up, I know we're going to hear from the applicant, so let's sit her in a moment, maybe she can advise us as to whether or not she would like us to split the motion. I would be interested.
Are there any other questions with Mr. Webb? Council Thompson.
Yes, Mr. Webb, I can understand why you would be here regardless of what your feelings are with respect to the application. Obviously, you want to raise some concern in case of any problems or complaints in the future, but I was here quite a few weeks. Have you been involved with the company for quite some time for modern?
At other locations, yes, I have.
Not this location?
Okay.
Well, I was here when the application came in, and the company located there and made a submission, but that's the location that we wanted to be in. They came in, they put up suitable burns. There are residential properties completely surrounding the property. In fact, is Mr. Mousari's property, have you fellas purchased that, or is that modern? He still lives there? So there's, I think he's been trying to get out for quite a few years. But anyway, this is something that has been going on for years. They located there, they knew there were residential properties across the road. I think the applicant has done a great job in trying to buckle that with the industrial uses in between that. So, does that not give you some good feeling about the applicant and what they're attempting to do here?
Mr. Webb?
Respectfully through you, your worship, no. We don't have a good feeling, and we haven't had a full and complete opportunity to review all of the studies. Given the nature of the operations, there are real concerns that the introduction of that land use may lead to future land use conflicts. Modern's preference is to see the lands developed for industrial uses, which we know have greater compatibility.
I'll save my comments for later, but there's residential uses all around it, and in fact, this mirrors the property on the other side, which, of course, the apartment building on the, that was approved for the Eagle Valley, and also the condominium developing across the road from there.
Any other questions with Mr. Webb? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Webb. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to make comment? Anyone other than the applicant? This time, council will hear from the applicant or his representative, Mr. Brady? Welcome.
Welcome. Now, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I have a few notes that I want to go through, and bear with me for a minute. We've been working with staff, your staff here, and the staff at the region, and the staff at the province, and through a number of provincial agencies, to deal with this rather complex issue that's been, that's just grown up because people really haven't looked at how to plan this particular area. And so we had this odd circumstance that Mr. Dervison talked about in terms of the urban boundary. Everyone now has agreed. We now have something which can be an urban boundary, and in fact, my expectation is it'll be a long-term urban boundary, because the lands immediately to the north of it, as has already been talked about, are being planned to be a golf course. They'll be at a much lower elevation as this sand pit has removed a great deal of the material in there. So what we'll end up doing is we'll be converting an area of the city, which is a pit and quarry operation, into a lot of golf course with some residential uses surrounding just the bottom of the course. We're well aware that there are some industrial uses as you move to the north, and in fact, that's one of the reasons why on part-three of this particular application, we're continuing to identify prestige industrial uses, to provide that kind of buffering that you would expect, so that you have the higher-intensity industrial uses like Modern off quite a distance to the north, some lower-intensity uses on our land to act as a buffering, and then moving down into the residential uses that we've talked about. I would point out that in terms of that compatibility, this issue of compatibility with the industrial uses and with the uses of the pit, has been tested by the, your planning staff, by the region, by the Ministry of Environment, and as Mr. Dervison was so kind to comment, by a study that was completed by was so kind to comment, by a study that was completed by my company that set out how the D6 guidelines operate and should operate within this context. All of these agencies are happy with those comments to date, save and accept, and fair enough, that the sand pit itself would have some impacts on the residential uses, and therefore, it's quite rational that the holding symbol which is being proposed by your staff would deal with that last line of incompatibility. So we've dealt with that. We've, as Mr. Darverson has identified, we've identified within the studies themselves that there will be some further measures between Part 3 and Part 2 in terms of some fencing to provide for some additional buffering. If it's impossible, could I go to the slide that shows that? That's the slide itself. If you look at this particular slide, you'll see where Part 3 and Part 2 divide, and if you look across the street, you'll see a relatively new subdivision which has been put in place, which is Morning Glory Court. So what you have is residential uses which are already further to the north, just across Stanley, in and about this context. So we've used that as the separating line between the industrial uses to the north, the residential uses which are to the south, and the residential uses which we're proposing to apply within that context. Now, there were considerable technical reports provided as a part of these applications. All of those reports have been adjudicated and reviewed by a number of individuals, traffic, dust, stormwater, et cetera, and while there are some future refinements that are required at the site plan stage, and as we move through in terms of the actual development of the golf course, the H symbol is more than sufficient to cover off that eventuality, and we certainly support that within the context of this application. There are two areas where planning staff and I disagree slightly, and I would, if you will, if you could open your recommendation report to where the three recommendations are outlined, and you'll see that on Recommendation 2, there are two parts to it. The first part, as shown, is 2A, talks about the holding symbol, and I have certainly no problem with the holding symbol, and it can certainly, in my opinion, deal with any other compatibility issues that perhaps Marv has, because as is shown right within this context, it's to ensure that the compatibility, noise, and servicing matters are outlined. So we have a mechanism. If you pass the official plan and zoning bylaw this evening, an H will be put on those properties, and certainly compatibility is still one of the issues that needs to be dealt with in a very specific context. So I believe that Mr. Webb's issues have been addressed completely within that report. The one that I would draw your attention to is 2B, and it deals with the relocating of the apartment dwellings to the north side of Part 1. If it's possible, and I know you have within the context here, a schedule which is referred to as Schedule 2. It's within the materials that were put up, and if you look at Schedule 2, which is now before you in terms of the monitor, you'll see that on Part 1, which is where that particular where 2B is discussing, we have two apartment buildings which have been located, and a row, or generally speaking, a row of townhouses which are adjacent to what will become a golf course. Those townhouses have been put in that position for a number of reasons, but the design of Part 1 is very much based on trying to make sure that we have a view into the golf course, so there'd be a, if you will, a wonderful back view for all of those townhomes, and that those -- that view is also shared by the apartment building. The apartment building at this location, once it's up to about two floors in height, actually has a magnificent view across the Niagara Skirtment and out towards other beautiful land uses. So the design, if you will, is based on having an internal road which goes through the property, and that the townhouses are on the one side of the internal road, and the apartments are on the other. This provides for a design which, in our opinion, works quite well, and it also provides for each of the units, or virtually each of the units on Part 1, to have a view into the golf course and up into the distance, which we think is important. If, on the other hand, you implement the suggestion that's being made by planning staff, you would take those apartment buildings and put them to the north, and you would put the townhouses behind them, which would, if you will, dramatically change the design which is before you, but more importantly, it creates difficulties for quite a number of the townhouses in terms of having a view. We believe that that's an important consideration. Planning staff have not really talked of the importance of the view of this property in their analysis, but rather, they've dealt with a number of issues which they think need to be addressed, or that they believe are important in terms of these particular properties. What they're talking about, if you will, is found on, I believe it's page 5 of their report. On page 5 of their report, they talk of three criteria that they think are important in terms of dealing with the juxtaposition of the townhouses and the apartment buildings. One of the criteria talks about having an adequate setback. In an earlier section of the planning report, it's been described, quite rightly so, that these apartment buildings are quite adequately set back from any existing single-family homes in this particular neighborhood. So the adequacy of the setback has already been established by the location that is been put with them. Any further setback, in our opinion, is not required given the circumstances. The other rationale that's provided is that there would be an issue in terms of shadowing, and they're right, there will be some shadowing, particularly in the winter months, of the townhouses that are immediately to the north of this property. In the winter, we have much longer shadows than we do in the summer, given the location of the sun, which I'm sure most of you are well aware of, given the number of studies that are required in terms of the hotel industry in the fall. But nonetheless, yes, that's the case, but what we'll have here are new townhouses as a part of a development, which will be shadowed from time to time in the winter by a new development which is a part of the same development. I would suggest to you that that's a much lesser planning concern than if it was a new apartment building which was overshadowing existing dwellings. So I would suggest to you that while I understand the issue, I don't believe it's as significant as an issue that's being put forth by planning staff, and I would ask you to let us worry about that in terms of the overall development of site. The third rationale that planning staff provide is that if you looked at the development from Portage Road internally, and the townhouses were closer to Portage and then the apartments were back, you would have a tiered development. You would see the townhouses, and then the apartments off, if you roll a little further in the distance, and that that would look quite nice from Portage Road. I would suggest to you that these two apartment buildings with the landscape that we're going to import will provide quite a good view from Portage Road in and of themselves, and more importantly than that, has it not been in the past, the planning staff has made the case, that a high-rise apartment building should be in fact close to arterial so that you can have good connectivity to the arterial? So I would suggest to you that that argument is a bit mute under this particular circumstance, and all of that argument, if you will, is to point out that we would prefer that the B part of that particular recommendation be deleted from this particular report. The last point that I want to make deals with Recommendation 3. And Recommendation 3, to a degree, is already being implemented by the fact that we don't have a bylaw this evening for counsel to deal with, and that's fine. I understand that. We would be satisfied that counsel approves this recommendation report, save and accept that 2B be deleted. But really, that particular issue that's outlined there isn't so much a planning issue as it is a legal issue, and really, it's a legal issue between two private players. There is a right-of-way that goes across this property. We've identified it. We believe it's more than satisfactory for the issues that have been addressed. We continue to try to seek from SciTech what their specific concern is over the right-of-way, and we're not getting a specific response. I can say, because I'm not a lawyer, that perhaps it's because there are a couple of different right-of-ways across this property, and SciTech has to select one, and they're not willing to do so at this point in time. We will be writing, or I, not I particularly, actually, Italia will be writing to SciTech at the end of tomorrow, if you will, and saying to SciTech solicitors, specifically, what is your concern in terms of the location of this particular right-of-way? Where is the problem, and what is it that you specifically have in terms of that problem? So we would ask counsel this evening to do as staff have recommended. However, in terms of Condition 3, we would ask that staff be directed by counsel to prepare that bylaw, and to bring it back to counsel for their consideration, hopefully at their next meeting. That will therefore give some time for SciTech to deal with us directly in terms of that issue, and if they choose to not deal with us directly, then there are other resolution techniques that are available for SciTech, and as has already been pointed out by your planning director, really, this issue is an issue between two private parties, and really, I don't think that the city really wants to get too too involved with that. At least that would be my advice to the city on that particular matter. Now, I think I have rambled on long enough, and in my ramblings, I hopefully I've addressed the issues that have been raised, both in terms of the planning staff report, which have been relatively minor, and in terms of the two letters that have come in. Oh, there is a third letter that did arrive from the public, and I guess they should address it for completion, and there was a letter that suggested that perhaps the sand pit would be better off not used as a park, or better used as a park as opposed to as a golf course. Well, in fact, that's not an issue before you this evening, and while your planning staff, I'm sure, will comment, and counsel will comment, on the Niagara Skirtment development permit that is required to allow the golf course to move ahead, it really is an issue for another day and for another body.
Mr. Brady, I have questions from a number of counselors. To begin, I have Counselor Inouye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Darverson. Mr. Darverson, as I was reading the report, Section B of Recommendation 2 stood out at me also, because I thought if you put apartments in front of townhouses, townhouses will have absolutely no view of the golf course. But for the apartment front, the townhouse, anybody over the second story will also have a view. Didn't make sense to me. Is that on a planning issue, or is that just the city's preference?
It's a planning preference, and no, and that didn't consider the other side of the coin, which was the view consideration, which is hopefully on certain...
So...
Certain urban design and protection of property owners.
So if we were to leave these dwellings as proposed and hope that you would be okay with that?
I would be fine with that.
Okay. A second is, before the SciTech went, I had an opportunity to speak to Ms. Kelly, and she told me very much what Mr. Brady said was, this isn't our, this shouldn't be before us, and that it would become a civil issue. So I think that the two things that concern me, we can actually address when we make a recommendation, so when you close this meeting, I'd be happy to do so.
Thank you. Counselor Yedder.
Thank you, Your Worship. My first question was answered. I had that same question about the apartment building and the condominiums. And the second question is, I keep hearing the name SciTech mention, what exactly is this that SciTech has there? I don't see any direct references. Is it a place they're storing things, dumping things? What is it exactly? Do we know?
To my...
Yes, please, Mr. Brady.
To the best of my understanding, SciTech has some property which is much further to the north and to the west of the properties that we have in place, where they've done, where they have an old landfill. And from time to time, they want access to that landfill, and to get to that landfill, they have a right-of-way. It's not an active landfill, to the best of my understanding, but from time to time, they still need to have some access, and we believe that they do have access to it.
Are there any further questions of Mr. Brady? Thank you very much, Mr. Brady.
Thank you.
At this point, seeing that there's no further questions, I'm going to close the public meeting with respect to the official plan and zoning bylaw agreement that is now concluded, and motion of Counselor Inouye, you want to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My staff's recommendation, changing 2.3, leave these dwellings as proposed, and eliminating Number 3 because it's not an issue that should be before this council, and I would move that.
Goodbye, Counselor Inouye. Is there second to that motion? That's Counselor Thompson.
Yes, I'd second the motion, and just want to compliment the planning and the applicant on the proposal that's been proposed this evening. Now, this has been an area, it's been a while, and I drive by probably several times a day, of concern, what was going to happen there. We had the modern application up the road there several years ago, which was approved with proper vermin, in spite of the fact that it's right in the heart of many residential properties. And the opposite scenario would be if you went and carried on the application to suggest that these lands would continue as industrial. And suggest that that was the case, you'd have the council chamber still with people in the residential area, here very upset with the fact that they would not like to see residential or industrial in this particular area. So I think with the application as very still, we've had a buffer put in place with the industrial area adjacent to, and it's a little bit of a conflict there with respect to how far that industrial area goes up. It looks like it cuts off just at the new area there, so there's a substantial distance that is still between where your industrial is and where the landfill grows in. So I think there's a good buffer there, and the idea of turning another golf course in that particular area from a sand pit is certainly a benefit to everyone, and I think it's easy to be in very desirable apartments, townhouses, and I think that a lot of people are probably going to be, feel some relief with respect to what has happened with this application, so that it isn't an industrial application. And I very pleased to second the motion.
Really else wishing to speak to the motion? No, at this point, we'll call the vote then. All those in favor? 1, 2, 3, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you be kind, if you introduce the next item in the agenda, please?
The public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed used car sales lot at 3516 Mercer Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, March 2, 2007, and by posting a sign of the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the coverage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process or applicable shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to call the planning director forward to explain the purpose and reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darverson.
Mr. Mayor of the council? Yes, second obligation regarding a style of independently operated used car sales lot in conjunction with this thing, salvage yard. So this is the location back with some of the property. You're going down Wilby Road and to basically extend the next piece, this is an open road to be covering a part of the road to see this property. It's a salvage yard facility and has a large road around it. This is the overall line. I can see probably the worm should be shown and bringing it around further the property. The used car sales facility was located from up with the trucks at the intersection of Wilby Road and Marshall. The operation is currently there. New building is being proposed, but not a lot of site operations taking place with respect to the current situation. The applicant requests an amendment to the zoning bylaw to permit an inherent run of used car lots on some property. The legal law in form of salvage yard currently exists. Used car sales are permitted only if they are accelerated from the salvage yard operation. Therefore, a minimum amount of sales operation is part of the zoning. They propose that up to 10 hours of vehicles will be on play or installed at any time. The official plan designates the property good generated culture, permitting a new use is not supported by the official plan and the relevant related actions. For temporary use is made, whether it apply with the official plan criteria, the criteria is followed. The used car sales operation will not entail major construction or investment. The used car sales lot will not remain in the valid, the case of land, and no impacts of property installation, parking, or service, and participating with this very small sale. There would be a landscape requirement with respect to Marshall Road and the next piece would permit one fall of the rental to the public. At the end of the three-year period, council will consider extending the use, should the act have been wished upon, of this operation. Our conclusion of the full sale of the lot applies with the official plan in regard to technical users and the menu bylaw will contain regulations, such as the size of the use, regulated, signage, or the landscaping along the road. Therefore, our recommendation this evening would be denied with approval.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darbison. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario municipal board dismissing any referral that we seize if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment? Having seen none, then council will now hear from the applicant. Is the applicant present? For the record, please, just give us your name and address.
I'm Dave Paul, live at 1070 Wake, Willoughby Drive, Niagara Falls.
Thank you. Welcome. Didn't really have a prepared statement for this. Okay, that's fine. Any questions of Mr. Hall? Okay, councillor Mayes and councillor Fisher?
I just have one question. I'm looking at the photograph there, the house, the dwelling in there, is that, is that your residence? It's not your residence. Is that going to be the office or is that someone's residence in the picture?
I believe that exists as a rented property owned by the, owned by the fellow who actually owns the facility.
I see, so he's a neighbor to the...
As far as I understand, it's a member of the staff that kind of rents that property.
I see. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mayes. Councillor Fisher?
Thank you. This property has been like this for many, many years, carried on a great business, has been a benefit to the community, and when the time comes, I will definitely support you.
Are there any other comments or questions of Mr. Hall? If not, thank you very much, Mr. Hall. Councillor Fisher? At this point then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. Pleasure, council. Councillor Fisher? Moved by councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Deodati. Any questions or discussions to the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Mr. Clerk, would you introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's zoning bylaw to permit a proposed cottage rental dwelling at fourteen three six zero Montrose Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, March 2nd, 2007, and by posting a sign of the property in question. Anyone who wants notice of the passage of the zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process or reportable shall leave their name on the sign and sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much. Once again, I'm going to ask the planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Darbison?
Thank you. The application before council this evening is a solicitor property. It's a rural residence to propose as a cottage rental dwelling for occupancy up to thirty individuals. This is the location of the subject lands. It's just, it's just north of the city's urban area boundary. It's fairly far removed from the city's general area. Further indication of the use of the property, the house is located at the front. There's a partially completed garage called a maid, metal frames, skeleton building to the one side. It's largely a rural vacant open area property. The lands in this general area of our community are designated for agricultural purposes. The predominant uses are agriculture, forestry and conservation. B and Bs, bed and breakfasts may be permitted where they are appropriate. There's a number of planning concerns with respect to the proposed application. Firstly, a cottage rental dwelling units or dwelling, housing thirty persons is more akin, in our view, to a commercial inn than a typical small-scale bed and breakfast. Cottage rental dwelling should be directed to the city's urban area and close proximity to the tourist areas. The proposal does not really fit in with the agricultural land uses in this area and the proposal does not leave the minimum setback requirement from livestock operation as described by the Ministry of Agriculture and Food and Rural Affairs. In terms of zoning, the property is owned for rural purposes. Land uses are restricted, restricted to rural residences and agriculture. A cottage rental dwelling with thirty persons occupancy is not consistent with the use of the... If council consider approving the application, there are certain matters that should be attempted first and they are outstanding building permit and property standard issues. In conclusion, it's our recommendation, our conclusion that the proposed use does not conform with the official plan with respect to appropriate land uses, does not appear to comply with the provincial regulations with respect to setbacks from livestock operations. And by the way, there is an existing poultry operation across the street. The high occupancy of the proposed use may be disrupted to the surrounding properties and the use could be more appropriate on a property close to the tourist attraction facilities in our community. It's our recommendation this evening, Mr. Mayor, that the mayor of the zoning amendment to permit a cottage dwelling of the community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darbison. Once again, members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario municipal board dismissing any referral that we seize if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Yes, councillor Peter Angel?
Your Worship, I just had a couple of questions to stop, actually, before we continue.
Certainly.
Okay. I guess, Your Worship, thank you. Three years' talk to Mr. Darbison. Mr. Darbison, in our, in our handouts tonight, we received some letters. I have one from a Mr. Peter Kicker. I don't know if you have that one and whether or not council has seen it. Your Worship, the, the letter that I'm referring to is from a gentleman that lives in the area of seventy-seven ten Ridge Road. And I'm just wondering if that's the connection between the poultry farm. The gentleman says in his letter, PS, by the way, I haven't had my poultry farm running for six years now. I want to know if that's the same poultry farm that we're talking about in this actual report because he does say in his letter that he's to the northwest of the applicant. I want to know if it's the same poultry farm that we referenced in the report.
Mr. Darbison, would you be aware of that?
There is only one poultry operation that is across the street and would be located with our request.
So that would be the one, then, Your Worship? So, I mean, Mr. Kicker says, I currently am not farming chickens and have no plans to do so in the future. So I guess, would that alleviate any objections about a poultry farm being there with the cottage dwelling since there isn't a poultry farm there?
Two questions. Mr. Darbison, would you answer that?
Yes. Our information was that there was an operating facility. I don't know if the, then the barn that formerly housed chickens was now used as livestock operation. If it is, then, then the distance separation would apply. Now, let me explain to council what the importance of distance separations are. It's an agricultural community and the predominant use of land is agriculture. So when people are farming and they're raising chickens or they're raising cows or they're raising livestock, they should be there first and the rights should be given to them over and above rural residences. The idea is to provide separation distances because over time, the ministry has found that when you put rural residences close to farming operations, there's land use conflicts, complaints against the farmer because of the noise and the smell and so forth. What the, what the rule is, is that you provide the minimum distance separation to avoid any complaints. What could happen in the future if you intensify an area in an agricultural area and not have regard for the livestock operations, it could mean that the livestock operations may not be able to establish or expand in the future. So there's a converse relationship that occurs. It's to protect the agricultural operation from encroaching residences on one hand and to ensure that the agricultural operations can continue to operate over the long term because you haven't permitted sensitive land use nearby. And so that's the situation and that's the explanation of that distance separation formula. But the letter does indicate that the neighbor is using the property for some livestock operation and probably the region should do a reassessment of the distance calculation because it depends on the intensity of the operation itself.
Okay. So I guess then, Your Worship, the report should reference the possibility of future agricultural, I guess, uses popping up in the area instead of ones that are over there because obviously there isn't one there anymore.
Leave that to your comment.
Okay. Your Worship, I also wanted to just mention, I know it's perhaps a bone that I have, but the good general agriculture, I know I've said it before, one of our former mayors was the one who said even in the crow in the Willoughby area, that's where Jack Roberts had to pack the lunch, and I believe that was our former mayor, Decatur. I don't believe that you can grow tender food in clay. It is yet to be seen. So I always have a gripe with the fact that they mentioned that the lands out there are good general agriculture. I grew up out there, they're not good general agricultural lands. Your Worship, I know that the report references occupancy and it talks about the fact that in B and Bs, there's likely two persons to a room and that this dwelling here has six rooms. I guess through yourself again, Mr. Darbison. Mr. Darbison, I know that you do note that should council approve this application, control over its occupancy should be considered. Are you suggesting that if council were to go forward with approving the application, that we should be looking at two people times six rooms? Would I be doing that right?
Mr. Darbison?
Okay. So you'd be recommending them twelve people? Okay. I guess we'll let the applicant speak to that a little later. The other, the other issue I have, Your Worship, is just the fact that I think planning staff is telling the applicant that if they want to open this type of use, that they should be in the tourist area. I mean, I, I don't believe really that city hall should be getting you to telling the landowner what his or her market is. And by telling them that they have to be in the tourist area because that's where all the services are, they're basically dictating where they're going to make money. And I don't know if that's entirely correct, Your Worship. And I guess the last point that I was going to make, Your Worship, is about the appearance of the property. I know that we've had some letters of rejection in here that talk about the appearance of the property. I know the applicant is going to address it tonight. And I guess through yourself once again, Mr. Darbison, if the council were willing to give approval for this application, could we do it on the condition that, that the applicant makes certain improvements to the property that would be in relation to the appearance of the property?
Mr. Darbison?
Yes, on the latter point, I guess would be appropriate to not pass the bylaw until such times as the outstanding works are completed to the satisfaction of the building department.
Okay, those are all my questions.
These are your questions? Thank you. Is there anyone then, other than the applicant, who wishes to speak to this matter? Councillor, did you want to make your comment? Councillor May?
I have a question.
Of the applicant or...
No, actually, just sorry, I guess the staff, all of them, upon councillor Peter Angel's comments. Is there any mechanism where as part of an approval, we could have a warning clause registered on title, warning of potential noise and odor impacts from nearby agricultural operations for any new or intensifying rural residential uses? I'm just wondering if this is a clause that will be to protect those agricultural uses and yet still allow the rural residential to be established or intensified?
Good question. Yes, Mr. Darbison?
Yes, a clause such as that could be instituted and registered on bylaw. Yes.
At this time, members of council, when it asks the applicant to come forward, Mr. Matransky? Is it you?
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'm Fred Greenwood.
Excuse me. Are you, you're not Mr. Matransky, are you? Your neighbor? Okay, you'd like to make a comment, certainly. Go ahead and make your comment first. Your name, please, and your address?
Fred Greenwood, fourteen twenty-eight nine North Oak. And I've lived there for twenty odd years and as far as having a chicken run across from me, it's, it's finished now, about five, six years. And for Bill next door, he's cleaned up the place quite a bit and can conserve it and I, I feel that he's doing a good thing. And I think if we pass that, it would be a nice... That's, we have no problem with him and all the people staying there. So that's what I get to say right now.
Good, thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Thank you. At this time, the members of council, we're going to ask the applicant to come forward. Mr. Matransky?
Good evening, Your Worship, and honourable council members and city staff. My name is Bill Matransky and my address is one-three-zero-zero-one Niagara Parkway. Before I begin my presentation, I'd just like to make a note that the address is wrong on the city's documents. It is fourteen-three-eighty. I don't know if that matters.
Okay, thank you for the correction.
I'd like to clear that up.
Thank you.
And my name is spelled right there. It's N-I-T rather than N-A-T, which of trumped it, what, so.
Good, thank you. A note to change, thank you.
For the record. I am a veteran of the service industry since my family has owned and operated Central Music and Welling for nearly forty-five years. Due to my wife's health, I have had to retire and felt the need to do more than just be a caregiver. Because of this, I have acquired, acquired a property which I felt I could utilize for myself and others. I am asking the council to approve this zoning bylaw amendment in order to utilize the property for benefit of large extended families who would like to visit Niagara Falls in a peaceful, natural, awesome setting. I also have and intend to use the property for various philanthropic purposes. I have approached and offered Wellspring Niagara and Cottage Dreams regarding the free use of the dwelling for cancer patients and their families. I have enclosed a letter from Ann Mantini of Wellspring Niagara, supporting my offer, and literature from Cottage Dreams. I have also offered the use of land to project share as part of the community garden. I have been renting out this property since May 2006 without the knowledge or necessity of this process, but it has given me information which I believe will help you make an informed decision. Today, there are many families traveling in large groups or in need of a medium place as they are scattered across the globe. Many of my guests have specifically chosen Niagara Falls as their destination because of the size and location of my dwelling. They were looking for a place to meet and have chosen Niagara Falls specifically because of this house. Because of, because the dwelling existed, certain tourists came here than they otherwise would have chosen another city. I believe Niagara Falls would benefit greatly if they encourage more of these types of rentals. With, with reference to the recent report by the Niagara Tourism Research Institute, the city must, I quote, "get back to its roots" and we must offer value for the dollar. It also reports the need to entice families and especially Americans back to the region. The families I attract are predominantly US citizens, as you can see in my occupancy analysis included in your packages. There is an occupancy analysis. Fifty-three percent of my guests were American. Our guests prefer to stay in a home which offers cost-effective convenience, privacy and a different cultural experience. No one has thought the distance from the brink of the falls was too great. They still visited many attractions. I make sure they are well aware of what the region has to offer and encourage them to visit as many as possible. visit as many as possible. Many have commented on how they appreciate my help and knowledge of the area. I have attached some letters, three letters, from guests that have stayed at my house. If you'd like to read those, they're included in the package, the handwritten letters. First, I would like to clear up concerns with the city bylaws. I am aware of the outstanding final inspection needed for the eighty-by-eighty steel frame building. The previous owner constructed it and then dismantled it when he knew he was losing the property. I agree it is an eyesore, and I have three interested parties willing to purchase and remove it. I have included the best offer, which is from Mark Cable, in my package. I also am aware of the final inspection required for the house. But since the exterior has not yet been completed, I have not called to set an appointment. Regarding the property standard violations, the previous owner left the house and the land in a mess, and I have done much to improve the property, as my neighbor Fred has attested to, as well as spending forty thousand dollars thus far while doing most of the work myself. I intend to continue to do so and will remove the old cars and debris within the next thirty days. I will most certainly comply with any required requirements as per city bylaws. With regards to the Niagara Regional Health Department's concerns, I am, I am willing to invest nearly thirty-five thousand dollars to replace the current septic system. Included in the package also is the tender that I would be accepting from Harvey Bean Construction. It will meet the code to accommodate thirty people despite the fact that most of the time the occupancy is less than fifteen, and seventy percent of that time the property, or seventy percent of the time, the property is vacant. Thus giving me ample time to offer it gratis to various charities, which I have. I will submit a water sample to the region, supporting the existence of portable drinking water supply. However, the house has two water dispensers, which I ensure are filled with reverse osmosis water. I currently have a three-thousand gallon cistern in which city water is delivered. My water system includes a chlorinator, an ultraviolet sterilizer, and filtration system. With regards to the Niagara Regional Planning Department and Development Department, Mr. Peter Calissimo mentions in his letter of March oh eight that the region does permit secondary uses such as B and Bs with up to six guest rooms. That is all I am asking for. My dwelling is not an inn or a motel, nor will it ever be. I am requesting approval for thirty-person occupancy, as it is a very large house as seen in the floor plans, which are also in your packages. One bedroom alone is five hundred and sixty-five square feet, including an en suite with a whirlpool and a nursery with a crib and a toddler's bed. That's more than half the size of a, of a normal single-family dwelling. Thirty people seems like a large number, but with the size of the house, thirty people do fit comfortably. Besides the sleeping capacity, there is an eating area with a table that seats twenty, a kitchen island that seats ten, as well as an additional dining room. When parents, their children, and their grandchildren want a place to congregate, this is ideal. Mr. Calissimo doesn't support the application because of the city having enough tourist accommodation. However, Niagara Falls doesn't have enough of these type of accommodations. I have had to turn away numerous guests during the two thousand and six tourist and holiday season because I was already booked. Cottage rentals are in high demand but in low in numbers. In the council meeting of September eleventh oh six, the city staff recognized this, and Mr. Darbison mentioned that there is a growing popularity around the world for cottage rentals, and that the city needs more of this type of accommodation. In that case, he recommended the approval of Mr. VJ Capore's five cottage rentals. The region has also raised concerns over the proximity of a chicken farm to the northwest of my dwelling. I have talked to Mr. Peter Kickerd, and he has informed me that he has not farmed chickens commercially for six years. In fact, he has sold his quota, as per his letter, and currently only has a small herd of cows which remain in the barn. The barn is located to the southwest of myself in the opposite direction of prevailing winds, and I have never had an odor or a noise problem. I definitely understand their concern of proximity, but it has been a non-issue as my neighbor, again Fred, to the north of me has, who lives directly east of the barn. He's right across the road from the barn, and he has never had a problem. The field across from my property that Mr. Kickerd owns is hay, and which he harvests for the cows. There are no fences, so the cattle do not roam. It is just an open field. And in fact, in your packages, in the picture tour, on the second page of your package, if you see the volleyball net in the middle right on the second picture page, there's the road, and that's the field across, directly across the street from my dwelling. Regarding the residence concerns, Sonia Coghill raises concerns about it being an eyesore. Most of her complaints address events taking place prior to my purchase. Surely she must have noticed the improvements since I bought it. I have done my best to clean up the immediate yard and plan to attack the best this spring. I am prepared to begin scrubbing the exterior of the house this week. As I have said, the steel building and remaining cars will be removed in short order. As far as the bricks and other debris are concerned, I plan to have whomever is excavating the septic system to organize them with their excavator. Since I have taken possession of the property, a large portion of my time has been spent on the interior of the house. And if you look at the pictures, I hope you will agree it turned out to be very appealing. Anyone who's seen it is impressed. Mrs. Coghill's proximity concerns are not understandable to me as her backyard line is more than one kilometer from my dwelling, as seen in the provided map. I have addressed occupancy, but will again stress that the house is well-suited for the number I expect. Most of the time, there would not be full occupancy. Again, I provided that in my analysis from last year. The occupancy is not normally thirty people. The average is eleven adults and four children. And the house has only been occupied twenty-eight point seven percent of the year. My main target group is families. The concerns about the water have been addressed. The three-thousand gallon cistern usually lasts three days or more depending on occupancy. All my toilets have been upgraded to the efficient six-liter tanks, and the showerheads are all rated at the least gallons per minute that I can find. Again, I repeat, I am willing to invest thirty-five thousand dollars in a new septic system, which I have been assured by the installer can be installed by the end of April. With regards to Vern Scott's concern about the building, I'm sorry, in regards to Vern Scott's concern about me building a string of cottages, it is not an issue as I have no plans of this nature. With respect to my closest neighbor that wrote a letter opposing my amendment, Don Perronowski, whose residence is buffered by trees and more than thirteen-hundred feet away from mine, she raises some valid concerns. The first of, first of which is a large occupancy request. I spoke to her husband recently, and we, and he had no noise complaints. If there were, they have my phone number, and I would encourage Mrs. Perronowski to call me at any hour of the day, and I will be there to take care of it within fifteen minutes. My neighbor to the north of me has had no complaints, as cited in his letter, and he is much closer. In fact, he, he, Mr. Fred Greenwood, has kept an eye on things for me and is here tonight. She is concerned about ATVs in which I would have never allowed. Concerns for environmental impact is of prime importance to me. If anything, I intend to improve the environment by disallowing hunting, recreational motorized vehicles, and any use of pesticides or chemicals by farmers who lease the land. The back of the property is, is considered provincially significant wetland, and I have been in contact with the Niagara Peninsula Congress Conservation Authority to do my utmost to preserve it and improve it. Tim Thalick from the Ministry of Natural Resources has brought to my attention that there is an endangered species of moss that is prevalent on the property near Key Creek, which is another reason I will ensure no harm comes to the property. I have included literature regarding this endangered species in my package. Also, please note, I have included three other supportive letters from neighbors in my package that I have not mentioned in particular. My maternal grandparents were farmers, and I grew up on a farm, and I am very interested in organic farming. I currently do it at home to meet our family's needs and as well donate any extra produce I have. Maintaining the agricultural use of this property is not only my intent, but the fulfillment of a dream. Your worship, thank you for listening. I hope you agree that my plans will be an asset to the tourism industry and the community as well. I respectfully request your support for the zoning bylaw amendment to accommodate short-term tourist rentals. I will be happy to answer any questions or address any concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darbison. I have a question from Counselor Di Addati.
Thank you, worship. Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Matransky. You know, the only thing that kind of jumped out at me initially, the thing that made me kind of raise my eyebrows was the capacity, the thirty. You know, and then obviously when I looked at the house, I realized it's quite, it's quite big. But let me ask you, approximately how many times in a year in your last, your rental did you actually have thirty or close to thirty in a stay with me?
Yes, Mr. Darbison?
Yes, through you, your worship. I have included my actual numbers with regards to each rental and, and ratio of adults to children. And I'm sorry, I did not number the pages. I just put them in order of speaking about them. I'm sorry, I have to flip through them myself. It was two or three times that were ever close. Yeah, okay. Mr. Perry also says two, so it's two. But as you see, I have done a weighted average with days rented and adults and children, and it turned out to be eleven adults and four children, even less than that because it was points. You know, I rounded up, in fact, rather, I've gone conservatively rather than. So very rarely would I have thirty, but sometimes I do get church groups or retreats from different organizations such as universities. They have like study retreats, and they want to get out of their current living accommodations and go somewhere where they can relax. And, and I have accommodated them. So, but as I stress again, the thirty number is not written in stone. It's just what my wife and I believe that the house can handle maximum comfortably without a problem.
Thank you. And another question through you, your worship. And I appreciate this. I know we were in P E I last summer, and same thing, everywhere we looked, people rented houses, you know, it was very common. And I know with our family, we often, we travel once a year as a family, and we'll need twenty spots, you know, for all the kids and everyone to be together. So I can appreciate that. My initial concern was the poultry farm, which is not a concern. The cars, the barn, the septic, it seems to me, are all being addressed. I have one other question is how far do you live away from this property that you own?
I live, through you, your worship, I'm sorry. I live directly east of the property on Park, on the Parkway on Lane seventeen, which basically Netherby Road ends, and I'm very close to that. So it's a ten-minute easy drive in emergency. I can be there in ten minutes. That's how close.
All right. One last question, worship. If, and again, I don't know the feeling of the council here. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with this myself. If we had to even give it a conditional approval or a temporary zoning bylaw approval, you know, are you comfortable with something like that if we wanted to see how it works out? I know it wouldn't be your first choice, obviously, but if we had to go that way to just get a feel to make sure everything is as it seems, what are your feelings on that? Thank you, worship.
Worship, I have no problem. Unfortunately, I've done the trial, I read by renting it without your permission, and I'm sorry about that. I'm confident that it will work and that I can make it work, but I am always open to any city suggestion, and I will abide by any bylaws that way. But I'm very confident that I do have a niche market, and specifically Americans from three states in particular. North Ohio is very big on my list, and Massachusetts for some reason. But I have a niche market, and it seems to work very well to the point where I am turning people away all the time. And in fact, if I can elaborate, this summer, I have only booked seven bookings over the whole three months of the summer. Due to my wife's health and my son being off school, I do not want to book it solid because I would be, I wouldn't be able to take care of my family. I'd like to spread the rentals out evenly over the whole year rather than, you know, most hotels or motels, the three months is their bread and butter. But it seems, especially with the new convention center coming now, that there are events all year round in Niagara Falls, including entertainment and, and smaller conventions too. So I, in other words, I plan I'm not booking it solid. So that, last year, there was twenty-eight percent occupancy. This year, I predict twenty percent occupancy, even less, just so I'm not so busy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Darbison. Any other questions, Mr. Darbison? Any questions from persons present who wish to ask, ask any questions about the application? Having seen none, then, the public meeting with respect to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment is now concluded. The pleasure of counsel. Yes, Counselor Peter Angel.
Yes. I'd like to make the motion that we approve the recommendation. I, like I'm sure many others around the table, have absolutely no problems with the application. On the condition, your worship, that a couple of things are met. One is that the septic system is up to par with the designation that we're going to be given, Mr. Matransky. Secondly, that there was two issues, one with the, one with the car, your worship, and then the other one was with the steel building, and both of them, Mr. Matransky has said that he will comply with. That would be my motion, worship.
Thank you. Counselor Thompson, seconded?
Yes, I'll second the motion. When I first looked at this application on the weekend, I was kind of mystified, and I, I thought to myself, we're going to have a problem similar to what we have out in, on Garner Road with cottages. But I have to say that your, your presentation was certainly all-encompassing, and you answered a lot of the questions. And I think the major problem we had when I read the application initially was thirty people. If you had have said six bedrooms, would have made me feel much more comfortable. But how many of the, the groups that come there are from a religious nature or retreats with respect to their religion?
Like organization?
Yeah.
Through worship. I've had probably over the last year, three or four from like organizations, whether they be a university, Sir Wilfred Lloyd rented from me, a retreat. A church group from Chicago came down, and, and they chose my property because there was people coming from the East Coast and California. And if you look on the map of North America... And if you look on the map of North America, Niagara Falls seems to be a central area and everyone knows Niagara Falls, so they seem to, you know, concentrate. So, they answered the three to four.
Anyway, I, I think what you're doing is, is satisfied me and I think that you're probably going to have some success there. And we'll have to see, maybe you can teach us how to get more than fifty percent, your worship.
Certainly.
Okay, thank you. We have a couple more questions, Mr. Transky. Counselor Ling and our C E O wishes to make a comment.
Thank you. When I first read this report, I was prepared to support the staff recommendation that we deny it, but having spoken with Mr. Transky earlier today on the phone, seen all that he's provided with us, the pictures, the letters from other neighbors, and the presentation tonight have satisfied me that this is indeed worth supporting. I propose as a friendly amendment that we do also enter a warning clause on title about potential noise or road impacts from adjacent agricultural operations for this property just to cover the bases of the ministry of agriculture, but otherwise I'm very happy.
Let me, would you approve of the move, your secretary? Okay. Yes, Counselor Carrion.
Your worship, did the motion cover the septic?
Yep.
Did you cover the septic?
Yes, it did.
I can support this, your worship, as well. I just have a question for Mr. Darberson. How, if we allow this, how does this water down the, the surrounding agricultural land use? I mean, the agricultural land use, they can still do whatever they want on their use. How does this water down the agricultural use, Mr. Darberson?
Mr. Darberson?
That is breaking, the province tries to protect agricultural operations from the introduction of septic uses. So, if you do have some compliance by, I guess, tourist people, the tourists that may have come here, that would be the issue impacting agricultural operations.
I understand that, but I, I still don't understand what, what teeth they would have. I mean, if it's the agricultural use, if there was cows running around on the property beside his, his home, I mean, that'd be his problem, I think. You know, I could see a council retreat here. I know there's only six rooms, but I'm sure that we could get some to book together. You might want to book this after this, this process, worship.
Thank you. Counselor Mays. I was just wondering, perhaps, Mr. Darberson, you can tell me, let's say some of the neighborhood decided to start up a chicken farm again or, or some other agricultural thing adjacent to the property, would that kind of mess this whole thing up or?
Mr. Darberson?
Yes, that's, I was trying to explain that. If you, if in the agricultural area, if you have residences, houses, non-farm residences or uses that cater to, you know, non-farm operations, then the opposite for the minimum distance separation from a, as you said, where you have to have a minimum distance between those residences and the new livestock operation. So, it does provide some, for instance, a small property, for example, next door, he may not be permitted to provide a livestock operation there because the house is there first. Or this particular operation, maybe fully operating with thirty people. And you'll notice in our reports, we've noticed, we've mentioned that the ministry has various distance criteria. The smaller, the smaller the intensity of the use, the, the shorter the distance is. And, you know, for thirty people, I think it's fourteen hundred feet is the distance separation. Therefore, you couldn't have a livestock operation within fourteen hundred feet. If the occupancy was somewhat less, it would be just separation of uses.
Thanks, thank you. Now, that's a very ambitious project you have here, aren't you? When I first looked at it, I thought that there was no way because of the configuration and, and of course, my concern was privacy amongst these rooms and various other things, but I think you've covered off pretty well everything. I'm very happy with your charitable work, Melzberg, a great organization, and I'd very much support the motion as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Our C E O wishes to make a comment.
I appreciate the enthusiasm and progress and it is unique. Our concern is really around building code. The building department hasn't really made proper comments. There could be some real issues about fire code because of the number of people. So, we were really discouraged, Counsel, from approving this just with the conditions they were, that you mentioned. And so, we've really had a chance to have our building official building. A lot of this work has been done without proper inspection. Our fire department hasn't properly inspected it. There's open staircases. There's a lot of issues that could really limit the ability, even though the concept I think we were okay with. But the reality is, it's maybe an unsafe place to have thirty people. And, and I would suggest that you either add the conditions on approval acceptable to our fire building department or even you might want to wait until you hear more about what those conditions are. You may not want to consider this at this time. So, we'd be very concerned with approval without that information before your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Darberson. I wanted to mention that to counsel with regard to the fire code and specifically to the load of the building as respect of the fire code. But Counselor Peter Angelo, do you have a comment?
Yes, thanks, worship. I guess as the mover, I'd like to simply add the appropriate condition.
Okay. Okay, so we have that, members of council, you all understand that that would be included. So, Mr. Transky, you're, you're well aware of what we're suggesting?
Yes, and can I make a comment?
Certainly.
If, whatever building code requirements that I have to meet for the fire inspection, I am willing to do it at whatever cost. My line of credit is fairly high since I own a lot of property and I am willing to invest it to do it properly. As with the septic system, you know, if it has to be done, it has to be done to meet safety standards and.
Appreciate your approach, Ling, and we'll have our staff visit and sit with you with respect to that, that point. So, members of council, you've heard the motion and the amendments there too. Any further discussion? Having seen none, we'll call the board. Others in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Transky.
Thank you, worship.
Members of council, I have several, I mentioned this just this evening, I'd like to express the condolences to our city hall family who have recently lost loved ones. They include Counselor Barton Mays on the passing of his sister, Loris. Our condolences, Counselor. To Karen Kitney on the passing of her two ancestors, Lucy Kitney and Rita Jackson, and to Paul Compagato on the passing of his father and Mr. Angelo Bressuti. On a happy note, congratulations go out to our newest father, Rob McDonald of Parks and Recreation Culture. Rob and his wife, Tamara McDonald, recently welcomed their first child, a son Cameron, into their lives. I'm pleased to report that through the efforts of our M P P, Kim Crater, I had the opportunity to meet with Premier McGinty, Minister Jim Bradley, and other members of our Niagara Falls Convention Center Committee this weekend to show him our convention center site and to share with him some of the plans and details of this project. On a similar note, I'm happy to report that earlier last week, we received a letter from Minister Jim Bradley, Minister of Tourism officially notifying us of the provincial government's commitment to our Niagara Falls Convention Center in the amount of thirty-five million dollars through its recent provincial budget. Electronic transmission of seventeen, seventeen million, five hundred thousand dollars has already been transferred to the city's bank account. And at the end of my comments, I'm going to ask you for a resolution if I may. So, there is half of that thirty-five million dollar commitment in our account as we speak. Also, Minister Hansfield, I had the opportunity as a result of the provincial budget, the check was received in the amount of six hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars was received from Minister Donna Hansfield, Minister of Transportation, representing an unconditional grant to our municipality to support further improvements to public transit in the city of Niagara Falls. On another note, I've been advised that Superintendent Brian Eckert has recently been assigned to duties at the Niagara Regional Police Headquarters in St. Catherine's and that Superintendent Robert Wright and Inspector Brent Simmons are going to be assigned to the Number Two Division. We welcome both gentlemen to their new duties in Niagara Falls. I'd congratulate and to thank Superintendent Eckert, Inspector Eckert, I should say, for his assistance in the last year or so in our city. Last week, I was also able to attend the United Way Annual General Meeting and Award Tonight where the City Hall received a bronze award for its two thousand and six efforts. Congratulations to members of the City Hall United Way Campaign Committee and to all those members of staff who volunteered and participated in fundraising events and who make, make all the important weekly donations to United Way. The committee had set a goal of twenty thousand dollars and I'm pleased to report that they exceeded their goal and collected a total of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. I'd also like to thank our City Hall Committee for their commitment to the United Way Campaign. They include Jessica Potts, Andrew Bryce, Bill Matson, Rob McDonald, Allison Kerr, Frank Costoni, Greg Farde, Karen Canali, Alicia Malet, Michelle Gaviric, and Angelo Dirksen. Also, I'd like to congratulate the Mayor's Youth and Vision Committee on their recent success with their second annual film festival held at the IMAX Theater. Congratulations go to Chris Elphick and Greg Baldwin of Stanford High School for their first place finish with a titled film, Full Tilt. Congratulations to Laura Kirkham and a group of Meyer students for their second place finish with a titled film called Pie. And finally, congratulations to third place finisher, Eva Graham and Tamara Speth of St. Paul for comic book world. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank our Deputy Director of Planning and Development, Mr. Alex Hillewicz, for his commitment to our public library. Alex has elected to enter a forty-two point two kilometer marathon along the Great Wall of China. In case you missed the article in today's newspaper, Alex is seeking sponsors for this run and all monies will be donated to the children's summer reading program at the Niagara Falls Public Library for locations. We wish Alex good luck. I know that members of council had signed the pledge form earlier this evening. Finally, a reminder that the Thirty-Fourth Annual Mayor's Period Breakfast will be held this Wednesday per four at six a.m. at the Americana Restaurant. This year's guest speaker is Mr. Chuck Winter of the Toronto Arvenhox. I'd like to extend a special thank you to the Mayor's Christian Period Breakfast Committee for their time and dedication to this very positive event. At this time, members of council, I'd like to ask for a resolution that we send to the provincial government for their support and commitment to the Niagara Convention and Civic Center. Volunteer, our Counselor Carrion and Counselor Peter Angelo, any discussion? Having seen, yes, Counselor Carrion.
Worship, I'd just like to add as far as, as I did in the Community Services a couple of weeks ago, that this building, it's not just for tourism. This convention centers to our community. It's going to be a fabulous addition to our community for things that would be brought to our community for the residents as well as for tourism. It's not just for tourism, your worship. And, yes, we, the federal government will follow with their efforts, that way.
We expect that that announcement should be coming shortly, so I anticipate that we'll have good news in the next week or two. So, that should complement the, the full, the commitment that we need for seventy million dollars from the provincial and federal government. So, thank you for those comments. Others in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Communications and comments, your clerk. We have a resolution requesting to be played April as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Mays. You've heard the motion. Others in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Also, Child Fine and Terry requests for playing May twenty-fifth, two thousand and seven as Nation's Missing Children's Day. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Any discussion? Heard the Martian. Others in favor? Thank you. The motion's carried. Are there any additional items for council's consideration, Mr. Clerk?
I don't know, your worship.
Okay. I'd like to call on ratification of Community Services Committee actions. Counselor I know he had to leave because of an illness, so we have Counselor Ling reporting.
The following items are to be ratified from tonight's meeting of the Community Services Committee. The minutes of the February nineteenth, two thousand and seven, and March nineteenth, two thousand and seven meetings be approved. That the report dealing with the road occupancy permit be deferred and that council deny the signed bylaw variance for five, seven, seventeen Stanley Avenue.
Thank you very much. Gratification, motion, motion made by Counselor Ling, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Others in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Counselor Ling, I'd like to ask you to take the floor with regard to the next resolution with regard to the road in Niagara Falls, please. Take the chair.
I will accept the motion for a resolution declaring the Roader Club of Niagara Sunrise Big Fest, a community event deserving of City Council votes, removed by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Any discussion? Anyone in favor? I'm closing in on this. Thank you.
Members of council, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any of the members of council wish to move to the consent agenda and hold by Counselor Carrion, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo? Any discussion? Having seen none, others in favor? Motion's carried. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or bylaws to the list for council's consideration?
First, there is, your worship, you have a hand up, deceiving which is a bylaw to authorize yourself and the Treasury to execute a letter of agreement with the Ministry of Transportation. This is part of the Ontario Bus Replacement Program and I try to expedite any bylaw that will give the municipality two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
That's what you hear. I have a motion, any additional bylaws and bylaws you gave in the first reading. Moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Fisher. Counselor, should the motion? Any questions? Counselor Thompson?
Just through you to the planned bylaw two thousand and seven sixty-seven. Maybe this was done prior to some of the new members of council coming back on. Hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Can somebody tell me what the consent study is and under assist the food and give a little information for a vote on it?
Mr. Darberson, could you enlighten us with that?
I can identify the acrobatic sixty-seven, two thousand and seven sixty-seven. Oh, yes. Yes, actually, I believe it was last time when I addressed counsel, I mentioned the growth management plan and I mentioned actually this evening that the, the city under the direction of the Colorado Province's growth plan, we must undertake a comprehensive review of our land use needs for both private land and residential land on a comprehensive basis. This council also last year directed the staff to, in addition, look at opportunities for to expand our economic base other than simply kind of tourism advantage point of view. This is a study that council commissioned. It's, it is worth about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It took about one quarter of the way through the first doing the peer reviews of two major development applications in our south end of our community. Both of those development applications involved about eight hundred acres of land that are quarries to be converted from industrial into residential. And that's part one of the study. And part two of the study will be completed in about the summer time. And all of the study and input from the study will be fed into the region's growth management plan as the city's input. So, this is a study that was authorized by council and also required by the provincial government.
Counselor Thompson?
Well, I appreciate your comments, but it's a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I think I'll just abstain, but I'd like to, I'm sure others would like to have an update on what this is all about. It's all encompassing and I think we should have some more information.
I think it's a very important piece of information I should share with the council. Is it a study that is not a tax supported study? This is a study that is involving development charges because it's a growth related management plan. So, the costs of study are borne from development charges and also the two development companies are actually asking for their projects to be peer reviewed as well, as well as contributing forty thousand dollars to the overall makeup of the study. So, it's not a tax supported study. It comes from those two sources.
Take counsel, Thompson.
I appreciate that tonight is probably, is it mandated by the province?
Yes.
Are you, is it mandated by the province? Okay, I, I would feel more comfortable just abstaining from this.
Okay. Any other questions with regard to bylaws? Having seen none? Others in favor? Motion's carried. Mr. Clerk?
Bylaw two thousand and seven dash sixty-seven to two thousand and seven dash seventy-seven were the first time.
Any kind of a motion to give about the second and third reading? Counselor Peter Angelo, Counselor Carrion. Okay, any comments for the, to the motion? Having seen none, others in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Bylaws two thousand and seven dash sixty-seven to two thousand and seven dash seventy-seven were the second and third time in town.
Okay, thank you. New business? Counselor Fisher?
Thank you very much. This is to Ms. Nicole. Ms. Nicole, at the last meeting, I carefully offended you and feel your great concern about your employment when you briefly came to see you. I'd like to apologize and will do accept my apologies.
Thank you, Counselor Fisher. Mr. Darberson?
Yes, your worship, thank you. Just to clarify, you're referring to the specific comments you made about the fact the C E O was not qualified when he took the job and had to take training and you indicated that wasn't the fact, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fisher.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Counselor Di Addati.
Your worship. Thank you, worship. Just a reminder, we're going to the A and Meyer Fiftieth Reunion. I do want to mention one last time, April twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, and the twenty-ninth will be A and Meyer's Fiftieth. If you have not already done so, you should register at the website. Go to anmeyer.ca. You can register. The Saturday Night Gala event at the Fallview Casino is selling out quickly. It's going to be a full house. We're getting emails and calls from all around the world. People are coming from all sorts of places and I wouldn't want someone to be disappointed who cannot buy tickets at the door. Tickets must be purchased in advance or you will not be allowed in as per casino policy. And we've got a lot of really interesting surprises. We don't want to let anything out of the bag. You'll have to actually be there for the surprise. And one neat thing that we're happy to announce, this, the weekend of my reunion, the falls are going to be turned copper and white. So, we're quite excited and I'm sure having just announced this, I'm sure the Stanford people have got some ideas. just announced this, I'm sure the Stanford people have got some ideas on colors for the weekend, but we're proud to say that for the first time in the fall, it will be purple and white.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Daddie. Yes, Counsel Carrion? Yes, he's finished.
Thank you, Worship. I just would like to take the opportunity to say a couple of words about the Stanford one-hundred-and-fiftyth year anniversary coming up. Stanford College, Your Worship, landmark in Niagara Falls since eighteen fifty-seven, is celebrating its one-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary from May tenth to the thirteenth, two thousand and seven, and is proud to be one of the oldest schools in Ontario and Canada. The school on the hill, which has seen many physical changes throughout its long history, has educated thousands of students over the years. Many residents of Niagara Falls, prominent business owners, successful athletes, scholars, medical professionals, politicians, and artists can attribute their success to the solid foundation they received during their years at the Drummond Road School. The festivities begin Thursday night, May tenth, with a pub night on campus, run Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Our alumni from as far away as New Zealand, Australia, Antigua, California, Oregon, England, Texas, Utah, and the United, uh, Emirates have already registered. Memorabilia will be on display, as well as sale of Stanford collectibles, spiritware, a special one-hundred-and-fiftieth reading yearbook, and a DVD documentary. Former faculty and staff and all former alumni are invited to attend. Registration forms can be printed from the web, the website, which is stanfordonefifty.com, or picked up at the Stanford's main office. Everyone must register, similar to the Meyer, uh, Fiftieth, planned through April twentieth. Tickets are going fast, so please get yours soon. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Counsel Carrion. Any new business? Counsel Thompson?
Yes, thank you. Um, first of all, I want to start out by congratulating everybody who have been involved in the convention center situation over the past thirty years, uh, and particularly those in the last few years, who have been able to really make inroads into the senior levels of government with respect to funding, because we've all been very clear about low local tax payers dollars being involved in, in this particular project. Um, and I'm hopeful that very quickly, there'll be another announcement to finalize the funding with respect to that. Um, I also want to remind people that, uh, another major project that we've been initiating here in the city of Niagara Falls has been the People Mover Project, and it has been sort of anguishing over the past several years with respect to, uh, reaching a final outcome, and, uh, I'm hopeful that that will come in the next sort of while, so that we can, uh, really put all the pieces of the puzzle together to make this a great tourism destination. I want to remind everyone that several years ago, uh, through the efforts of, um, Lieutenant Terry and, uh, the federal member from, uh, St. Catherine's, um, we were able to acquire twenty-five million dollars towards the People Mover, and, uh, I'm hoping that that is going to move along quickly, and in fact, that twenty-five million dollars is going to be, uh, the catalyst that makes it all come together, along with the private sector, and I'm extremely pleased to see that, uh, there has been some, uh, support from the, uh, local newspaper with respect to the People Mover, and in fact, a, uh, a recent editorial with respect to the acknowledgement of the importance of, of that particular project to the city of Niagara Falls. I want to ask through you, uh, through the chair, to Mr. McDonald, if you would give us a report back as quick as possible, to ensure us that that twenty-five million dollars is there, uh, it will either move towards the People Mover system, or hopefully, uh, if it isn't a rail system, a rubber tire system, and, uh, make sure that that is there. I was at the recent, uh, gathering in St. Catherine's, and, uh, somebody whispered in my ear that, uh, make sure that your twenty-five million is set aside for the People Movers, and it's not just moved over with another, uh, ten million to look after the, uh, the convention center. We want both of those initiatives to go ahead. With Mr. McDonald, I would ask you, uh, if you would report back to us, uh, to ensure that that money is available, and will stay there, and will be available for that particular project.
And Counsel Thompson, we've been assured by the federal government that money is there, uh, there's a separate program, and money has been sitting waiting on the, uh, the determination of the city and the opponents, and, uh, Mr. McDonald, you want to confirm those comments, if you would?
Uh, we have, uh, Your Worship, attempted to keep in contact with the federal government because we share the same concerns that Counsel Thompson has mentioned, but I'll be happy to initiate under contact and report back. We're hopefully getting closer as well to be able to come back and do a full status report, hopefully, uh, in the not-too-distant future, and we're just sort of putting some kind of pieces together as a critical piece of report on the issue.
And, uh, members of council, you should be advised, as you have been, that there are a number of meetings that have been held over the last several months with all the stakeholders, uh, that they acknowledge the efforts of staff, in particular, for promoting all these, that a lot of work has been done, uh, trying to bring the parties together. Uh, meetings will be held in the next several weeks, or not upcoming, I should say, with regard to, uh, where we're going to go with the RFP two. Uh, we had to consider many different issues that the stakeholders had risen through, have brought forward through their concerns in the city, so we'll be bringing a full report to council in, uh, in the next, uh, few weeks, so thank you again, Counsel Thompson, for your comments. Do you have any business? Having seen my motion adjourned, Counsel Peter Angelo, Counsel Mays, thank you very much.